Brian Card.
Here.
Vietgo Lawrence.
Here.
John Sarantopoulos.
Here.
Matthew Wendorf.
Here.
Michael Huco.
Here.
And Keith Thurlo.
President. Okay, seating all things, we got a full board, we're good. Attendants?
Nothing at this time.
Good. Just up in chairs, I've got about three warning. You'll be looking over there until I'll take all the talking.
Oh, get a grip. Keith, hate to tell you this, but we've been sitting like this for like the last three or four months.
(laughing).
Citizens comments on items not serving to public hearings. Anybody here want to make a comment on something that's not on a public hearing tonight? Public comments can be emailed to publiccomment@colletct.com. We're mailed to Town Engineering once a month. We do Main Street, 06239. Our public comment must receive part of 2:00 p.m. the day of the meeting. Public comment received will be posted on our website. To participate in the citizens' comments, the public may join the meeting via telephone, while viewing the video on their device. Turning your phone, iPhone, 2501, 4556550001. And access code 26331719426. Okay. Do I need to?
No.
Okay. That's what I just.
Well, this.
You might want to turn.
No commission or (laughing).
I know, you heard it anyway. Special permit application number 22-1289, Davil Fourcorners LLC, applicant owner, 730, 736 Hartford Turnpike, GIS map 115 lot 6, general commercial zone, seven acres. Request use of existing space in building for liquor, beer and wine sales under TOK zoning regs under 420.2.2.1A with reference to 420.1.2I. Continued from last month and two other months ago. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Patrick Dory. I'm with the Boynton Engineering Consulting. First, I'd like to apologize for this is the last meeting. Several family matters to attend to that have taken up a lot of my time. You certainly didn't want to waste the board's time by, you know, saying I was going to be at the meeting and then not being there.
Appreciate that.
With that, we're here for the site plan, the special permit for a space in the existing building, what's known as Davil Fourcorners Shopping Center. It's the end cap where Halloween spirit has been seasonally occupying the space. It's the last space in the center. My client, Davil Fourcorners LLC, has owned the center for about 15 years. And through those years, we've renovated the plaza, the building, the parking lot, have marketed it. And this last remaining space has been very difficult to rent out for one reason or another. There was a tenant that was interested in opening a liquor store there. I explained that after we, or as we were making the application, it was found out that another party had applied for the last remaining liquor license in the town. Davil Fourcorners does want to proceed with the special permit with the hopes that we could, you know, market this to maybe someone who wants to relocate, or if someone was going to transfer their license, or if something fell through with that other liquor store. So, as of right now, we don't have a tenant, but we wish to be able to market it to prospective liquor stores, tenants. So, you know, as you mentioned, we were here several months ago and opened up the public hearing. We explained the proposal and we received some questions. And we're asked to kind of do some research. We were asked some questions on the operation of the business such as store hours, et cetera. There was questions on the number of other similar stores nearby. We were also asked about, to gather information on accidents that may have happened in the plaza or at the intersection. And also asked to provide information on how this proposal specifically meets the special permit criteria. So, in response to the questions, I'd offer that the store hours, we propose they be allowed as local and state license requirements allow. We wouldn't want to put a restriction on it. I've looked up other stores in the area, and they generally operate from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Monday through Saturday, and 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Sundays. We were asked specifically about bottle returns. Again, we wouldn't want to handcuff any of the operators, you know, that may have a specific way to do it, whether it's the vending machines or a counter where they, you know, store the items in the back. If there's anything specific such as storing, you know, bags of bottles in the open, we could certainly, you know, condition the proposal that any loose cans or returnable deposit returns be placed in the storeroom. We also mentioned, but it wasn't as clear, that our parking analysis that was done as we've renovated the building had proposed this space to be retail sales. And the 80% would be sales floor, and no more than 80% would be sales floor. And, you know, this would be a similar use with the similar parking requirements. So, we would, you know, condition that only 80% could be retail sales, or 7,350 square feet. Regarding stores, liquor stores within the vicinity, I would say there's three in close proximity. There's cost cutters in the Coles Plaza, Lucky's at Killenly Commons, and Davil Fine Wine and Spirits that are about a mile west of the intersection. There's two additional sites within two miles, that being Captain Jack's, which is another, it's about two miles west of the site on Route 101, and then Danielson Liquors, which is about two miles south of the site. Liquor sales in town are only allowed in three zoning districts, in the village commercial, the general commercial, and the mixed-use interchange zoning district. Stores of this size, over 5,000 square feet, are only allowed in the general commercial and the mixed-use interchange district. And those districts basically are around the interchanges with 395 and the state highway. So, you know, that's kind of the reason why you get a concentration of the stores in one area, that in that they're just general commercial areas in general. So, in response to that question, that's, you know, why we would have three and have four in the vicinity of this interchange. We also reached out to the resident trooper and local, and state fire. There's no really official records of accidents on private property here. I think that they may keep track of accidents, over $1,000 of damage, or if they, there are injuries. There wasn't a concern with this plaza in general as being a safety hazard. And, you know, we, you know, believe part of that is because we've done some renovations in the parking lot and, you know, added striping and make sure that the spaces are all striped, and the signs are always maintained. And, you know, our feeling is that the plaza does operate adequately. Liquor stores in general generate traffic. If they're standalone, they generate traffic at about the same rate as a standalone pharmacy or a standalone grocery store. However, when they're in a shopping center type of environment, a lot of the trips across strips, you may go to Aldi's for your groceries and stuff, and get some beer or wine next door at the liquor store. So, you know, generally, the liquor store in a shopping center doesn't generate atypical traffic compared to the rest of your uses. And, you know, our feeling is that, you know, there's plenty of parking and that the driveway will function as it is now. Regarding the specific requirements of the special permit criteria, we've submitted this site plan. I believe that that includes all the requirements. There's no proposed site features on this. We would just be renovating the interior of the existing building. So, we've got an as-built survey that would serve as the site plan. The review by the board should note, you know, there's A through F. The first being the nature of the proposed site, including its size, shape, and proposed shape and arrangement of structures is adequate. You know, this being an existing center, we're not proposing to expand it. You know, it functioned as a department store and grocery store in the past, and we believe it'll continue to be appropriate location and arrangement. The resulting traffic patterns, adequacy of proposed off-street parking, loading, and avoidance of hazards to pedestrians. When we renovated the parking lot, you know, we added the clearly marked handicap, striping, crosswalks from those spaces, striped a fire lane, and in general improved it so that the traffic patterns, you know, in our mind is adequate. The nature of the surrounding area and the extent to which the proposed use or future will be in harmony with the surrounding area, or will serve as a transition between unlike areas, and will protect property values and preserve and enhance the beauty of the area. Again, we're only talking about an interior renovation. This plaza is in a commercial district. There's not any residential homes nearby. Our feeling is the use fits in in a shopping center type of environment, which it would. Item D, the proximity of dwellings, churches, schools, public buildings, and other places of public gatherings. You know, again, we're in kind of the center of a commercial district away from the schools and churches and public gathering areas. The avoidance of potential nuisance, you know, I think that the only thing that we would be is maybe adding HVAC on the roof, and not proposing any loud exterior coolers or anything like that. There would not be generating any fumes or noise. And then all standards contained in these regulations, and we explained through the site plan review over the years that the site is in compliance with the zoning regulations. So, with that, I would open it up to any further questions.
I've got a couple of questions for you real quick. Have you done an analysis for all the businesses in there and parking versus parking? I know you talked about it briefly, but I didn't catch it at all.
Yes, so we did this, I think originally back in about 2008. We, the requirements in the zoning ordinance for existing buildings is that you need to comply with the amount of spaces based on the original, I guess, the calculation, so... Or the requirements based on the code, it wouldn't exceed what was, what's required. So, we did an analysis based on, you know, the B. Brothers and the Ames, how many parking spaces were required for that. And then, as in every individual business has gone in, we've updated that calculation and provided it. For this particular application, I just resubmitted what was submitted for Harbor Freight, which was back in 2016, because this particular unit in that analysis was designated as retail sales in 80% sales area. So, that wouldn't change under this proposal. I mean, it would still be in compliance.
And I don't remember there was no problem, there's extra spaces?
Yeah, in general, the plaza operates, you know, fine. And this end cap has, you know, a whole lot of parking spaces that aren't used. All the spaces, I guess, on the east of the building, there's several spaces, you know, those are not utilized at all during normal operations of the plaza. So, there is available parking there.
I know that was one of the comments when we first addressed this, and it was, we were approached as to some issues, and I think the general consensus was there was parking issues there, and at least coming in, especially coming in and out of the entranceway where it's very confusing in there. I don't know what...
Yeah, yeah, I would say, it's interesting that you said that. I go to Aldi's occasionally, and I never even had the sense that there is a row there of parking spaces. And I go out in that eastern way rather than go through the busy place across from Zips. And I'm just astonished that I, you know, my eyes never registered. So, I'm just wondering if that patch of unutilized parking spaces, if you could, you know, do something to say, hey, you know, come look here.
Yeah, I think part of it is that there's generally, you know, the spaces in front of the Halloween spirit open. So, you know, those spaces would obviously be used first, and then if you go into the liquor store, you'd be by that entrance, and you'd see that those spaces are there. You know, we could, obviously, if there was issues, put a, you know, a small sign on the, on the building, you know, saying additional parking with an arrow, or something like that.
I think, I think one of the issues on that area you're talking about, though, is there's always a loader there with a box plow that stays there pretty much most of the time. I think it's still there right now, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think the loader's not there, but I think the plow was there.
The plow is still there?
Yeah, and the reason it's stored there is because those parking spaces aren't used.
I get it, I get it. I do it, so I know what you're saying.
We wouldn't hurt businesses by, you know, parking things or taking up parking spaces.
Maybe you could park it to the back or the rear of the building so that people can realize there's actually parking spaces there.
Yeah, yeah. Or towards the back of that, there's not really any room in the back of the building.
I understand.
But, yeah, we could make sure it's...
But towards the rear, so that these people can see there's, there are some.
Yeah.
And you made reference to the coolers, so obviously, you're going to have some coolers there. So, what is it you're going to do with the coolers? How are you?
They'll all be inside, you know.
All the refrigerant machines are going to be inside?
Right. But the only thing we'd be adding is, I don't believe that there's any HVAC on this section of the building. It's heated by a Modine heater inside, and, you know, that's obviously not going to be enough to keep us a store, you know, heated and cooled.
Hmm. Any other questions, Commissioners? Stop?
No, we just want to make the Commission aware that this is just to open it up to a possible tenant. He doesn't have a tenant because there's no state licenses at this time. So, I just want to make you aware of that, too.
Anybody from the public want to speak to this application? Joe, you're here, Economic Development.
I lost the convenience of it all.
Okay.
Personal information.
And if there are more comments or questions, anybody want to make a?
Yeah, I have a question.
Sure.
If this thing is approved, if they find a tenant, this applies, right? So, how long does this stay in effect for?
A special permit?
Yeah.
Goes with the deed, so...
It goes with it?
It runs with the land.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, am I have a motion to close the public hearing?
You have that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions? None? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Zone text change, application number 22-1294. Applicant requests continual to September 19th of 2022.
I'll make a motion to that effect.
Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Second by Matthew. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose or abstentions? Okay, unfinished business, special permit application number 22-1289, Davil Fourcorners LLC, 730 and 736 Hartford Turnpike, GIS map 115 lot 6, general commercial zone, 7.07 acres. Request use of existing space in building for liquor, beer, and wine sales under Town Engineering zoning regs under 420.2.1A with reference to 420.1.2I. Kind of a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve 22-1289 with the following two conditions, that any deposit container storage would be inside the building, so no outdoor storage, and that the floor retail space be limited to 80%.
Go, second.
Second.
Any further discussion? Nobody?
Brian Card.
Yes.
Michael Huco.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, Michael's not seated, sorry. Vietgo Lawrence.
Yes.
John Sarantopoulos.
Yes.
Matthew Wendorf.
Yes.
And Keith Thurlo.
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Set, sir. Okay, text change, application 22-1294 is continued. New business, special permit application 22-1296, Nutmeg Killenly JV LLC, Darian Post Road LTD, and Flanders Post Road LP owner, excuse me. 1076 North Main Street, GIS map 130 lot 6, vacant bank building, adult-use cannabis retailer status establishment under Town Engineering zoning regulations, Section 420.2.2R under general commercial use, Section 567 cannabis establishments. Receive and then application and scheduled for public hearing, suggested hearing date September 19th, 2022. Is it complete?
It appears to be complete, yes.
Kind of a motion, please?
I make a motion to receive application 22-1296 and schedule for public hearing September 19th, 2022.
Second?
I'll second it.
You can have it.
John, second it.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstentions? Okay. Adoption of minutes, July 18th, 2022.
I have one correction, even though I wasn't here, I just didn't read right. Page six. Who's got it? I think a word's missing. So, under the bullets, 1, 2, 3, fifth bullet, number three, should that be, we do not allow any S to use?
Which one is it?
I think it's require.
We don't, don't require.
We do require, it's just a word missing, so...
Yeah.
Okay.
It should be the word require.
What page was that?
Page six, fifth bullet.
Okay.
Number three.
Yep.
Just there's a word missing. I don't know what the word was.
Okay, anything else? So, we got a motion, we got a second, right?
Oh, sure, I'll make the motion with that. How's that?
And I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Just a clarification, that is to approve the minutes as, adopt the minutes as corrected.
Yes, correct. Very good. Okay, other miscellaneous, plant permit renewal, application 19-1227, Ernest Jolly and Sons, 32 features of, GIS map 262 lot 15 and 16, GPS address 583 Warigan Road, 175 acres, general commercial zone, to continue a gravel operation which includes washing, crushing. The operation was established in 55 as a sand and gravel operation, requesting another three-year extension. Can I have a motion, please?
I'll have a, I make a motion to add another three years extension.
Second?
I'll second.
Matthew, seconds. Any further discussion?
Just a quick question, that was not our authority, but the air and Niptes permits are current, I presume? Will we not get those?
I'm sorry, your question?
The air and Niptes permits for the site, especially the Niptes, I assume they're current.
We would have to verify.
We'll verify that, though. We'll just request copies of the most current.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor say aye, please.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Okay. Building, application number 131064, subdivision of the Building America Companies LLC, transferred and assigned to TriLakes LLC for Phase 1 to 31 lots. Single-family cluster development, 520 Bailey Hill Road Lot, May 143? What's May 143 mean?
Map.
Map. There you go. Okay.
Typo.
Good. Lot 6, rural development zone, Phase 150 acres, total acres 645. Current approval expires in November 23, and applicant is seeking an extension for an additional four years until November 27, as of out under Connecticut general statutes. Eight dash three.
Okay, so this has been out there waiting for something to happen for a very long time, right? Yeah.
Okay. So, can I have a motion, please?
Can I have a question first? Sure. Is four years the max allowed by statute?
That's four years is what he's asking, because at that point, the way the statute was being read, that's the way we thought. But after that, he can come in for one more five-year. The, I almost want to say the minimum extension is 14, the maximum would be 19. But we had to have that clarified before, before tonight, and that's what the attorney said. So, after this one, he'd be allowed one more extension for a five-year extension, to make it the full 19 years.
Okay, I just want to make sure, because we had some typos in the staff comments on the dates and stuff. So, I want to make sure. I know his letter said four, I just want to verify the four. That's what he's going for.
Yeah.
And as a side note, we probably need to look at our subdivision regs and clean up the language, because our subdivision legs kind of don't go with this in a couple sections. So, I don't know if that makes any difference. We do refer to general statute and extensions, but we have a couple spots where it says we can't. So, we just might want to clean that up a little bit. I can focus after the meeting.
So, I didn't, haven't ever heard this thing described in exactly this way. So, correct me if I'm wrong, what you just said is this can only be re-upped for a total of 19 years.
Right. You go to the date that it was originally approved.
Yeah.
And they can extend it underneath our state statute, which was just passed. It's brand new. It's kind of like the state statute that they had when we had the housing crisis, when the market bottomed out, they were allowing everybody to extend their permits.
Yeah.
That's what they're doing again because of the COVID. He has a minimum of 14 years, and then there's a maximum of 19.
They didn't round it up to 20.
No. And both, both sections said that. This, the section for this particular type of approval was very wordy. So, I sent it over to the attorneys, and I said, is he right just to ask for four? Does he get another five? And it's basically, by state statute, we kind of have to agree to the extension to the 14, and then the addition, but we can't go over 19. So, that additional, the five, if he doesn't start it in four years, he may go for an additional five. That would be totally up to the Commission, unless, of course, the state statute changes again. So, this is by state statute. He's coming in underneath the state statute.
Anything else? You have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to grant the extension to November, November 1st?
November.
Oh, yeah, right. November 1st, 2027.
Mm-hmm.
With the two conditions, that the original approval letter from February 7, 2014, be incorporated into this extension, and that the bonding requirement at the time of starting construction be submitted to staff and conferred with town engineer and approved. Right, start.
For a second?
Second.
Second, I'm burger. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose or abstentions? Okay, special permit application number 22-1286 by American Storage Systems LLC for 551 West Cot Road, GIS map 214 lot 5, 3.8 acres, general commercial, request to construct six new buildings and convert one existing building for a self-store service storage facility under Town Engineering zoning regulations, Sections 420.2.2Q. Applicant is requesting a 60-day extension to file the milars and the approval letter due to delays in receiving approval from ConDOT. This 60-day extension would bring the filing date to the end of business on February, on Friday, September 16th, 2022. Okay, any, you need to explain anything, anybody for that?
It's just basically that the engineer and the surveyor were working with Connecticut DOT, and, because going back and forth, so they weren't going to file plans that weren't approved by Connecticut DOT as well, and DOT lapsed in timeframes and whatnot, so they're asking for an extension.
But if the state continues to not do what they're, what they need to do, then this person is going to have to come back? Or is there some limitation on, I mean, is the state essentially going to make this a problem?
I recently received a letter from Connecticut DOT, which gave me the indication that it was approved, they just wanted to see, like, one more change on the map. So, hopefully, everything will be, it will be all set.
Okay.
Anybody got a motion, then? Somebody got a motion?
Yeah. I... Yeah, I I'll make a motion to approve the extension of 60 days for application 22-1286 to Friday, September 16th, 2022.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Brian, second it.
Yeah.
Any further discussion on the application? Anybody? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? Okay. Correspondents on department reports, zoning enforcement, and zoning board of appeals, inland wetlands water courses, and building officer's board.
CBA did not meet last month, we had no applications. Inland wetlands did not meet, we had no applications, but we also don't have a quorum currently of members. So, we need, we need another member to meet quorum for wetlands.
Does somebody exist and doesn't show up, or somebody needs to be appointed?
We, uh, lack appointed members. So, we only have three appointed members, you need four for a quorum. We only have three members, that's it.
How long do their meetings go?
Like at night?
Like never.
Usually, usually they're quicker than you guys. Yeah.
Ryan, don't you dare change.
But we have at least one person who might be applying, but if anyone knows anyone, we do all the training and get everybody up on that.
Inland wetlands.
Inland wetlands, yep.
Okay, anything else? Anybody got questions? Economic Development Director report, ma'am.
We have three upcoming ribbon cuttings. We have on August 22nd, right here on Academy Street. It's called Honeygood, it's a creative studio on the 24th.
What does that mean? What does that mean?
Creative studio, it's a placemaking, so she she'll do things like embroidery pencils for kids going back to school. She can either do it, or you can go in and interact with the machinery that she has. Then on the 24th, August 24th, we have Taylor Studios, they've been open for a little while, but they haven't been open to the public, and they're going to do their ribbon cutting.
And what do they do?
A dance studio, dance lessons, yeah.
And where is that?
At 128 Warwigan Road, and that one will be at 5:00.
That's Jolly Commons.
And then on September 9th, at 4:00, at 435 Hartford Pike in Dayville, we have Green Valley Laboratories, and she makes baselines for cosmetic products. And the last, since we met last, I've been doing some legislative tours, some meet and greets with our legislators to hear some pain points some of our stakeholders have before they go into their legislative session. So, I did the Republicans two weeks ago, and I'll be doing the Democrats this week. That is all.
Town council liaison?
We're having problems tonight, huh? Could it heck off tonight?
Yeah, if if you're not using your mic, just mute it.
Okay, from the special town council meeting, there were presentation of student achievements to the Killenley High School Red Line Newspaper, the girls lacrosse team, and the KHS football team. There was a presentation on the Conservation Commission and Open Space Land Acquisition by Ann Marie Aubrey and Donna Bromwell. And from the town council meeting, Jamie Gervais was appointed to the Agricultural Commission. And for new business, there will be a public hearing on September 13th for loitering, littering, and public consumption of alcoholic beverages, also to include public consumption of cannabis to be prohibited. And also to change the or amend the Chapter 3 alcoholic beverages ordinance to be in line with the states. It's already been, the alcohol or the package stores have already been complying with the state regulations, so they're just going to change the ordinance for the town to be the same. And there was a revision to the policy for the sale of town-owned property and state statutes for zoning and regulation for accessory apartments. And the Connecticut Deep granted a grant for urban green and community garden grant program for, to use for the for the.
Community garden.
Community garden, I keep wanting to say Westcott Road for Westfield Avenue.
Westfield Avenue.
Yes.
Just to follow up with her a little bit, you'll notice the very last page in your packet, I would appreciate it, it has a three-hole punch in it. It's the resolution for the town itself to opt out of the accessory dwelling, please put this in your zoning regulations as well. Your, what you did, having the public hearing and voting to opt out, was the first step. This was the second step, this is what made it final. Okay? And anybody who ever got approved from a secondary dwelling unit and everything, it's fine, because it's all underneath our regulations, so there's no need, no worry for anybody to, if anybody questions you.
Richard and I had questions.
I think I resolved your questions, will you?
We we will be able to fill our hole with something.
Yeah. And also, tonight, I put in a grouping of zoning regulations that had to be updated because we passed the cannabis regulations. So, please put those in your zoning, because you will be having your first public hearing on a cannabis retail establishment next month. So.
Everybody set tonight?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn?
That you have.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.